We'll move on to our third meeting of the evening.
Third or fourth? Technically, three.
Let's say, third. And that will be a meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown, here. Hazen, Hershey.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. Next up is approval of minutes from previous meetings of December 9th, which was a public hearing, tax levy public hearing from December 9th, and also minutes from December 16th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice. Any corrections? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? I hope not. Presentations. We don't have any presentations. We have two, one public input card from Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. She's not wishing to address the members, but states that they're continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. We have no unfinished business. Go on to reports of standing committee. Mary Alice?
On behalf of the committee as a whole, I move approval for resolution number 2020-01-001-R, a resolution approving amendment number one to a mortgage promissory note and regulatory and land use restriction agreement.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hazen, Hershey.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports of special committees. Reports of officers. Carol?
I have a brief report to share. I'm passing it out. As some of you may know, the Gather Development got underway this morning with some demolitions. And so, I thought it was timely to share with you what the construction traffic plan is for the project. So, there's some text on the one side, and it's a memo from Ben Holtshausen, who's our right-of-way technician in engineering and public works. But the more interesting piece is the little map on the backside, which shows that all construction traffic will be entering and exiting the site from Bucie Avenue. They will not be allowed to go south on Bucie, south of Clark. But they'll come off of University. None of the traffic will enter through Lincoln. And then, after they get a little farther underway, we will be closing Clark Street to through traffic, which will help them stage their construction. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions about that, but we'll be sharing this with the public as well.
And the contractor will be holding neighborhood meetings soon?
Yes, that hasn't been scheduled yet, but soon, just to talk about, you know, what's ahead.
Timeline? Have they given a construction timeline for this? Now that they've finally started?
Here comes Lori.
Sorry, Lori. Even though I know you were coming up, anyway.
Not that we're aware of.
I could've done that.
Demolition will be ongoing for the next few weeks at any rate. And I did want to let council members know that the rewritten liquor code, chapter three of our city code, has been distributed for internal review to staff. And after they finish reviewing within a couple of weeks, we plan to bring it to city council in February, hopefully, early February, for review. And it'll also be, of course, available to the public at that time as well. So, it'll be several weeks' process there. But we're very pleased with the rewritten code and look forward to your comments as well. Okay. Any other reports of officers? Okay, moving on to new business. Resolution number 2020-01-002-R, resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance. ZBA, CCZBA case 945-1819, which is expanded noticing.
Good evening, members of council. As there are several related Champaign County zoning ordinance text amendments, I'm going to present them together because they're related. So, I'll be addressing cases 945, 946, expanded noticing and buffer, 947, conservation recreation zoning district buffer. Those three were all in the same first memo, as well as case 971, financial assurance requirements. That was in a separate memo. These are all proposed amendments to the recently passed solar farm zoning ordinance amendment.
Kind of a point of order. Mr. Clerk, could these be done in omnibus fashion?
These are, yes, they could, and with two motions, and then a roll call is going to be needed, anyway.
Okay.
The issue is that with these resolutions of protest, it's better if you just move the resolution as it's written, and then, if you don't want to force the county board to do extended vote, just vote no. Okay? Don't do a motion to defeat the motion to protest. It gets too complicated. So, just move the motion, and you could, you know, move to omnibus, the four of them. We do a unanimous voice vote, and then we have a roll call for the four of them.
So, the motion should be stated. I, they would, they move approval of the resolution of protest, and then the correct vote would be no.
No, yes, yeah.
Okay, Marcus.
Okay. I am as confused by it as you are. So.
It's perfectly.
Going ahead. So, cases 945 and 946 are alternative versions of a proposed text amendment to address site location, notification to neighboring municipalities, long-term leases, public hearing timelines, comment periods, and continuation of operations of solar farms that are proposed. All of these amendments were prompted by representatives of some Champaign County municipalities who had expressed a desire to have more input during the county's going-forward approval processes for proposed solar farms that are proposed to be near their municipality. So, after last year's solar farm text amendment went through, and even during that process, county municipalities, some of them, expressed concerns that they weren't being given enough time to review plans. They brought up situations about long-term leases that weren't going to get approved by the municipalities as they felt they should be. And they also wanted to be certain that they would have adequate time to review the proposals. So, and some of the municipalities also wanted a larger buffer between their boundaries and a proposed solar farm. The current version allows them to cite as close as half a mile. Some of the municipalities wanted a larger buffer of a mile and a half. So, if you look at case 945 and 946, the table in the memo, which might be a little larger for you, they are identical, except for case 946 increases the minimum required buffer from a half a mile to one and a half miles between a municipality and a proposed solar farm. The other four parts, A through D, are in both of the cases. So, they wanted to make those options available to the county board to vote on. Either increase all of the notification time periods, or increase all the notification time periods and require an increased buffer. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, all right. I won't belabor that. The environmental land use committee for Champaign County discussed these proposed amendments and requested that Champaign County planning and zoning staff put two alternatives together. Staff didn't just do it out of their own desire to create more work for themselves. And the county board will hear these cases at its February 20th meeting at the earliest, which will give them a good amount of time to hear the city's input. And then, case 947 proposes the elimination of the current one-half-mile buffer requirement between a proposed solar farm and a conservation recreation zoning district. So, there might be a park in that zoning district, or there might be open space, or there might be a home. It's a zoning district. It's not necessarily a strict use district. County planning and zoning staff reviewed that current buffer requirement and determined that that was not really necessary, that that buffer wasn't important. So, case 947 is to remove that one-half-mile buffer between a proposed solar farm and a CR zoning district. The staff report goes into great detail on each of these parts, A through D, as well as case 947. Moving into the discussion section regarding cases 945 and 946, staff doesn't anticipate a negative impact to the city or its ability to plan or manage growth or development. Staff does acknowledge that case 946 requires an applicant to apply to the county board for a waiver and be granted that waiver if an applicant wants to locate their solar farm closer than a mile and a half to the city's corporate limits. The proposed amendments regarding notification of municipalities are not relevant to the city because the county already notifies the city of special use permit applications, which would include those for proposed solar farms. Regarding case 947, cat, staff does not anticipate a negative impact to the city or to its ability to plan or manage growth or development regarding this case. The proposed deletion of the one-half-mile buffer is not relevant to the city as it affects only county conservation recreation zoning districts. On December 5th, the plan commission discussed the proposed text amendments. This discussion resolved with the decision that the city would be able to deal with the additional burden of working with an applicant who wanted to cite close to the city, if that was their desire. And the city could discuss that with the applicant and make their feelings known to the county about whether or not they would support a waiver from an applicant to the county board to cite closer than a mile and a half to the city's boundaries. The plan commission felt that other smaller county municipalities might not have the staff resources to deal with that additional burden of pushing back against a proposed solar farm. So, they felt that they should not recommend protesting either of the proposed zoning amendments, either to require the additional noticing language or to increase the buffer to a mile and a half. So, the commission voted unanimously to recommend defeating resolutions of protest in cases 945 and 946. Additionally, there was no discussion about case 947 because it only applies to county conservation recreation districts and would not impact the city. So, the plan commission also voted unanimously to defeat a resolution of protest in case 947. In case 971, which is the proposed text amendment for increasing or modifying the financial assurances required for a financial institution that would be issuing letters of credit to a proposed solar farm, staff feel that it's of minimal interest to the city of Urbana because it will not affect zoning and land development decisions within the city's bounds or within its one-and-a-half-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. The proposed changes in this amendment include the option of referencing the Crawl rating system and requiring a minimum corporate debt rating of A minus under this system. The current language only refers to the Standard and Poor's or Moody's reference systems. Staff does not anticipate a negative impact to the city or to its ability to plan or manage growth or development if this amendment goes through or if it does not go through. The proposed text amendment does not directly affect the use of land or impose any additional burden on the city. Again, on December 5th, plan commission discussed this proposed text amendment. Plan commission's interpretation was that one additional financial institution, at least, would be able to provide financial assurances. Therefore, the plan commission voted unanimously to recommend defeating a resolution of protest for case 971. In all four of these cases... Let's see if I can get this to go. Okay. Here you see the summary. Plan commission voted unanimously to recommend defeating resolutions of protest for all four of these cases. Staff concur with those recommendations. And just a little reminder summary. If you don't want to protest, move for a resolution and then defeat that protest. If city council wants to protest, move for a resolution of protest and then approve the protest. And I, the whole omnibus thing is over my head, so I'll let the city clerk deal with that.
Technical questions for Marcus.
Can we not consider the fifth one in with these?
The fifth one is for non-conforming structures and issuing a preemptive variance. I am glad to present that information.
Would you like to have that one presented as well and do them all?
Accept.
Okay, let's do these first. All right. Any questions? Mary Alice?
Okay, so, A, this is a lot, so thank you.
You're welcome.
You did a good job of boiling it down. I'm going to attempt to boil it down even further, just so I am clear.
Sure.
So, there's really three issues here that other municipalities were interested in, the county revisiting in terms of their zoning rules. One is the buffer area. Two is the timeline in terms of reviewing the proposal. And three is the ability to review any leases over five years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the only thing that I see that may be of interest to the city is a special use permit. And I'm not suggesting that it definitely is. I would like to know, if we are notified of a special use permit, do we have any action that we can take? Any kind of protest that we can take? Or is it just that we are notified?
We are notified. We can't protest them, but we can offer comments.
All right, thank you.
Other technical questions? Would someone like to offer a motion?
I'll do that one.
You're going to move approval?
I'm, well, eventually. But I'm going to actually propose that the committee consider resolution number 2020-01-002, a resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance. I'm not going to read that one again. Resolution number 2020-01-003, another resolution of protest. Resolution number 2020-01-004-R, another resolution of protest. That one with the CR zoning district buffer. And resolution number 2020-01-005-R, another resolution of protest for financial assurance requirements with the credit thing. Be considered in omnibus fashion.
Moved by Jared. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Seconded by Dennis. Further discussion? All those in favor of considering these in omnibus fashion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Since it's unanimous, we will then go on.
So, voting on those in unanimous fashion, I would move approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice, and the appropriate vote would be no in this case. Will the clerk please dent the bill?
Just on the separation from county conservation recreation district. You said it's not relevant, but we do have county conservation recreation adjacent to the city on the Kickapoo Rail Trail. So.
Yes.
I'd say it probably is relevant. But whether you want to increase, whether you need more than a half mile, what would it do? It would reduce it to zero?
It would reduce it to zero.
Wind farm could be right there.
Solar farm.
The solar farm could be right there. But it would still have to be a half mile from the city?
Correct.
Okay.
And there is also the contiguous urban growth area that is around the municipality that it could also not cite within. So, the Kickapoo Rail Trail is probably buffered by the fact that that area is protected by that CUGA area also, even if it loses its protection by the conservation recreation half-mile buffer that it would lose.
Okay.
Multiple layers of buffering.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
And then, just for clarification, then, then if we, if the motion is to approve and then we defeat it, what it allows the county board to do? Is it the board or the zoning commission? Is to make the decision with a majority, simple majority. They don't have to have a extreme majority or a high majority.
Correct.
Supermajority. Supermajority.
Are you ready to vote? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
No.
Oh, no.
Hershey?
No.
Jacobson?
No.
Miller?
No.
Roberts?
No.
Wu?
Nope.
That resolution of protest was defeated.
One through four.
One through four. Last item is resolution number 2020-01-006-R, resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance for non-conforming structure preemptive variance.
Thank you. So, this amendment has nothing to do with solar farms. It is of minimal interest to the city of Urbana because it will not significantly affect zoning and land use development decisions within the city's one-and-a-half-mile ETJ. Champaign County planning and zoning staff believe that an applicant should have the option to request a variance to rebuild a non-conforming structure before it is destroyed. This would reduce the amount of time that a building, when it is destroyed, has to wait until it can be rebuilt because sometimes months go by before a case can come before the Champaign County Board or the ZBA. Zoning Administrator Hall stated that the request to rebuild a non-conforming structure is one of the most common variances that is requested. At its November 14th meeting, the CCZBA voted unanimously to forward this proposed amendment to the environmental land use committee for approval. Essentially, often, a case will come to the ZBA where they're asking for other variances. And when staff go out there to look at the property, they'll also find that the structure on the property is non-conforming. And the occupant or owner of the property says, "I didn't realize that. Can I get a variance to rebuild the property if it's damaged?" And normally, you can't get a variance for something like that until after it's damaged. And then, they're stuck waiting for several months while they go to ZBA and then to county board for that variance. Zoning Administrator Hall would like to have the authority for the ZBA to grant a preemptive, non-conforming structure rebuild variance. City staff do not anticipate a negative impact to the city or its ability to plan or manage growth in this case. Any variance granted by the county board should be considered by the city if and when the land on which that non-conforming use is located is proposed to be annexed into the city. However, if that land is annexed into the city, that variance does not apply to the city. And if the city so wished, they could grant that, a similar variance in the process of negotiating the annexation agreement. Or they could say, "No, we don't like that preemptive, non-conforming structure variance, and we will let you wait until after the structure is damaged for you to apply to the city to get that variance granted." Plan commission, on December 5th, voted unanimously to recommend defeating a resolution of protest for this case. And city council has the following options: to defeat a resolution of protest, to defeat a resolution of protest contingent upon specific provisions, or to approve a resolution of protest. Again, as Mr. Roberts stated, under state law, if a resolution of protest is passed, it would need to be approved by county board with a supermajority to override that. And that is the end of the presentation.
Questions? Mary Alice?
So, if this is approved and somebody is granted a preemptive, non-conforming, I realize that it doesn't necessarily meet the standards for the city, but at the county level, does that mean that they have that forever? There's no timeframe? But they are forever, basically grandfathered in with the ability to rebuild in that similar structure?
That is correct.
Okay. And, well, my other comments are more discussion. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Sharice?
Could you give me an example of such a situation that this might be applied to?
Sure. Probably, an easy one would be if somebody had built their house too close to a property line. And if a tornado came by and knocked it down, past, I think, 50% of the fair market value of rebuilding it, they would have to move the house outside of the required yard unless they were granted a variance to rebuild it in the same place.
Okay. Is it more likely that, in that kind of situation, the city council would grant such a variance based on the fact that the house had been like that all the time? And it was, you know, an act of nature that took it down, otherwise, blah, 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 blah?
So, in the city, non-conforming structures cannot be rebuilt if they're damaged more than 60% and of the repair value of the fair market value at that time. So, I believe it would come to plan commission?
Shouldn't it just say county board? County board?
Did you mean county, a county variance?
Just a reminder, this is a, we're considering items that the county board would consider. So, we haven't processed those cases in front of the county board, but based on the fact that the county zoning administrator is asking for this change, I believe they do process a lot of these cases. And I don't know what their approval rate is on them. But I think the issue is, if someone is missing a house, they would like to rebuild that house as soon as possible and not wait the seven months it might take to get through the county process.
Okay. Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
And that preemptive variance, it still goes through the public hearing at the time that it's being granted, so if a neighbor says, "I don't really want that house that close to the property line," they still have the opportunity, when the preemptive variance is granted, to express their concerns.
Bill?
So, the preemptive variance would be issued before there was any damage?
Correct.
Okay, and then if it was annexed to the city, we could annex it as-is and call it non-conforming, but they would lose their preemptive variance?
That is how I understand it, so I would be willing to take any sort of legal advice on that.
It's possible that it, once it comes into the city, it wouldn't be non-conforming because often our rules are more permissive in terms of lot size and whatnot than the counties.
But if it was non-conforming to our current code, they wouldn't automatically have a preemptive variance just because the county issued a preemptive variance?
That's correct.
Okay. Any argument from the attorney on that?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Mary Alice?
That was my question.
It occurred to me, what about the buildings, the former Pomology Grove buildings at the corner of Windsor and Philo Road, are those currently non-conforming?
I have no idea.
Okay. Dennis?
Maybe I need to wait for discussion.
Okay, any further questions?
I'll get a motion.
All right, we'll get a motion on the floor for discussion.
Okay, I'll move approval of resolution number 2020-01-006, resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance, CCZBA 948 AT 19, non-conforming structure preemptive variance. That was for approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice. Discussion. Mary Alice?
So, my thoughts here are the following: if this was before the city council, for city council zoning, I would absolutely vote no on the proposal. But my thought here is this is county, and we have different zoning rules than county already. I don't think it's a good idea for them, but if they want to do it, I'm not going to stop them, but I do want to kind of make it clear that I would never approve or support something like this at the city level. There, having something in perpetuity is, in my opinion, not good planning, having, well, I'll just leave it there so I know other people when I say something.
Dennis?
Well, I was pointed out, I mean, this concerns me as well, I would say, and if it was going to be something that our zoning board of appeals would be discussing, I'd be very much against it. One of the ZBA members for the county writes a paragraph about their concerns, which I won't read all of it, but it says also that the ordinance is that the board is prohibited from granting these variances for non-conforming structures except for those that are specifically provided in Section 8, which provides granting the variances for expansions of non-conforming uses and provides granting variances for the reconstruction of non-conforming uses that have been destroyed. But if the home is still there so that there is no provision in the zoning ordinance for granting a variance for an existing structure because it is non-conforming, and then he says, "The board is not authorized," legally he's talking about, "legally, the board is not authorized to erase a non-conforming status of existing structures. We can only provide for the expansion or reconstruction, but here the board is not authorized to change the status." And so what, and that that was actually in violation of Section 9.1.9 of the ordinance. So, then the zoning administrator says, "Well, we're just trying to make things easy for everybody." So, I have a conflict between making things easy for people and actually following an ordinance which is known to all, and especially, I mean, it would be fine if they were going to allow a variance based, or a waiver based on the fact that there was damage, but to do it before any damage is even occurring or in, you know, expected is, I think, somewhat of an affront to the ordinance structure and the rule of law. And if, you know, maybe if it was a house, I would, you know, they would grant a waiver of this freely, but what if it was a big barn, you know, or something like, what if it was a pig barn? Would you really necessarily want the pig barn to be preemptively grandfathered in forever? So, I, so I'm not going to support this. Maybe everybody else thinks it'd be just great to make it easy for the county to make its own decisions, but based on the legal question of, are you going to support an ordinance? I mean, we had discussion about, you know, in other circumstances about, you know, supporting decisions that are being made by other bodies concerning the legal standing of, you know, of properties in our community, and I think it's, I think it's unuseful for us to support what I think is a bad decision being conducted by the, being requested by the zoning administrator.
Any other comments? Eric?
I think there are, you know, Urbana used to be known as the city that told everybody else what to do. We passed all kinds of resolutions that were very grand, and we don't do that so much anymore, and I, I think that's a good thing. I think there ought to be a very high bar to resolutions that tell other people what they ought to do under circumstances that don't really affect us. So, I share Dennis's view, and in fact, we've had cases quite recently come before us, which, cases of grandfathering in a structure that had not, that had been put there illegally, and, and, and the, and we said, "No, you, you can't improve that structure. You've got to, you've got to actually abandon that, that new use." And so I know clearly what our standards are, but I, and I think we've expressed this, and I want to reinforce what Dennis said, we've expressed this in the public discussion, but I will, I will vote no on the resolution of protest just to, in recognition of the fact that it's not really our domain.
Further comments? Bill?
Still thinking about different cases, but, so is this similar to the special use where they would notify us if they're going to grant a preemptive variance within the ETJ?
We would not be notified of a, of a variance case. We would be notified, but it is not the type of case that we would issue comments for. We get a typical list every few weeks of all of the cases that are coming up in front of them, but...
The only example I can think of within the city where people have had strong opinions, I remember, is in the case of billboards. If a billboard that's in an inappropriate location is non-conforming and it was to be destroyed within the city, we definitely wouldn't want it to be rebuilt or give any kind of preemptive thing on something like that. So, I'm trying to think if there's anything equivalent like that within our ETJ we'd have to be worried about, because if you do it preemptively, then they would basically have whatever they have indefinitely, but I can't offhand think of anything like that. So, I'm leaning toward defeating the resolution.
Sharice?
Because I'm still trying to understand this, so what this, what this resolution basically says, or what the ZBA, CCZBA are actually trying to say is that, let me, let me just try to think of example, you have a, a business in Urbana, okay, that's going to move into, onto county land, and let's say that that business is using cow manure to make beds or something. So, the smell of cow manure, if we say that this is okay, and that they, all they have to do is get a special use permit or something, that will be in perpetuity, perpetually used, we could forever have the city of Urbana smell like cow manure beds?
I am glad to say that that is not correct.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to understand.
Another, another, so if the pig barn was built five feet too tall?
Uh huh.
Okay, just not, not your pig barn, but the pig barn that Mr. Roberts talked about, if, and then it burned down completely?
Mm-hmm.
The township, the county's zoning ordinance would normally say, "Okay, you have to build it only to the proper height, not to the previous height." If they had gotten a preemptive variance to allow it to be built to the original height for whatever reason that they were able to convince their zoning board of appeals at, at the public hearing, because it still goes to a public hearing for that applicant to argue for that variance, then they would be allowed to build the pig barn to its previous heist in the year 3000.
Okay, so, so what I want to know, what if we didn't want the pig barn and we're all glad the pig barn burned down?
Then the county zoning board of appeals could say, we don't, they couldn't say, "You can't have a pig barn," they could say, "It can only be this high," because...
So, we still have to deal with the pig barn?
Yes.
Okay, so if, if in fact...
If it's in the county.
If it's in the county, I mean, but what if, you know, the county pig barn smells up every place, right? Because, let's be honest, that's what pigs do. So, what I want to know is if, would, would the city of Urbana be required, or would we, would we have any say-so at all in dealing with the pig barn being rebuilt, period? Would we have any say in that, or is this, this is just, so what we're doing, are we giving away some of our power to the county of Champaign?
We would not have any say either way, whether it was, whether the zone, the amendment was passed or not.
Except that, if, if, if that, if that, if that is in the, if it is in the city of Urbana, the pig barn, then we have to say, "You can't build it to," we don't have to given the variance to do it. Is that, is that what I'm saying? I'm just, I'm asking, that's why I'm asking questions.
The variance would no longer apply if it's annexed into the city, and we would never annex a pig barn into the city anyway.
I know, I'm just, I'm thinking worst-case scenario, you know.
Dennis?
Yeah, we're not advising them how to vote, we're just requiring them to have a majority, more than just a simple majority. In other words, okay, they can do it if they want, but what we're asking is that if you're going to do it, and we don't think it's a good idea, we're just going to ask you to have six, seven votes instead of four. That's what we're doing. We're making them vote a little more positively to make that variance happen. We're not saying they can't do it, we're just requiring them a higher standard to make that thing happen. That's all we're doing.
If you choose to approve the resolution?
If you approve the resolution, which isn't approval.
Mary Alice?
All right, so I appreciate everybody's insights because it's got me thinking, and I had not thought about the billboard use, Bill, and so what I, I've gone back and forth on this, I think there are areas north of Cunningham that might fall into that issue, but I couldn't say off the top of my head. So, I guess at this point, I would be in approval of the current motion because that does concern me. I, I do recognize what Eric is talking about, I agree, we have to be careful of what we can and cannot influence, and, but I do think that items such as billboards, other structures that maybe are an eyesore to the city are something that we should at least ask the city council, sorry, the county board to carefully consider, because this is for anything. It's not a particular thing, it's not a pig farm, it's not a billboard, right? It's anything within their zoning ordinance. It's not even a particular question that's above right now, it's just that somebody could apply for it, and then it would be there. It would, it would still have to have approval, absolutely, yes.
We have a motion on the floor, staff is conferring at the moment, any other discussion item, question, or discussion points. Bill?
It's kind of back to a question, when they, when they approve a variance or a preemptive variance, is it just a majority board, majority board vote to do that?
Yes, it's just majority on variances.
Okay.
Did you have further information?
Just in reading the resolution, Section 2 on the second page, I think where it says defeat, we meant to say approve, but I need to read this again to...
Okay.
Because normally, a resolution would be written to say approve there. So, I just want to make sure, however you vote on this one, that it is...
I believe Laura is correct.
So, we have, we have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution. If you vote yes, you will be protesting. If you vote no, you will defeat the protest.
I think the intent is right.
Yeah.
What, what is the, what is the functional significance of which way we vote? If we vote to support the resolution of protest, does that make any difference in how these matters will be handled by the county board and the county zoning administration?
The other, the ones we already voted on said approved, right? So, why don't we just amend this one to say approve, and then vote on it the way we did the last time?
I agree, because I think what Eric might have been bringing up was if we pass a good resolution, then that forces them to maybe have to have the supermajority.
Oh, okay, so this will have a functional import?
That's why I'm saying...
Require them to have a supermajority.
I'll move to amend Section 2 of the resolution to replace the word defeat with approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Jared. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Because the others do say approve, okay, good. Okay, are we ready to vote?
And so the vote then would be, the results would be the same effect by voting similarly that, by voting no approves?
No will defeat.
No will defeat.
No will defeat, yes will approve.
Yes, will approve.
And then, and the approval is to approve that a supermajority is required?
Only that they have a supermajority in their vote on this particular thing, not that they have a supermajority for their ordinance.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
No.
Hershey?
Um...
Did you get confused, Sharice?
Huh, yes.
No to defeat, yes to approve. They're asking us to defeat it.
The staff is...
Did you vote yes?
I vote yes.
Okay.
Jacobson?
I have listened to my colleagues and thought about it, yes.
Miller?
No.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
By my count, I have four yes and two no. Then this resolution is approved.
Thank you.
All right, last item on the agenda...
You have two, two items left.
Oh, two items on the agenda.
Board appointments?
Yes. Board and commission appointments, I have several tonight. To the design review board, I recommend appointing Dustin Allred for the term ending June 30th, 2020. He's a lecturer in the Department of Urban and Regional Planning. He previously served on the mixed office residential development review board, and he currently serves on the sustainability advisory commission. Travis Scheiss for a term ending June 30th, 2022, is an architect, he's a nine-year resident of Urbana. This is also for design review board, grads, graduate of the U of I, he feels passionate about the community, wants to help it grow and thrive. and thrive. So let's take those, start, well, let's just do them all. I have Market at the Square Advisory Board, David Saum for a term ending June 30th, 2023. He's the owner of Dragonfire Pizza, serves on the Champaign Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Board. And he's being brought on in the new position that you created a few weeks ago to provide an understanding of the challenges and a perspective that food trucks face with regard to Market at the Square. And then lastly, for the Sustainability Advisory Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2020, Jacob Torres. Mr. Torres has a master's degree, or masters of science and biology and is a PhD student in entomology at the U of I. And he has a personal interest in urban ecology, urban sustainability, and also serves on the Tree Commission. Is there a motion?
All right. I guess I will make a motion to approve the one, two, three, four appointments that are offered by the mayor for the various boards. The Design Review Board, Dustin Alred, to the term applied, indicated. Travis Scheis to the term indicated to the same board. And David Saum, Saum, to the Market at the Square Advisory Board, to the terms provided. And Jacob Torres to the Sustainability Advisory Commission, to the term provided.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That motion passes, and I want to thank the members of the community for volunteering for these boards. Our last item on the agenda is we will need a motion to go into closed session to review closed meeting minutes pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C 21.
I move going into closed session to review minute, release of minutes.
I second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Sharice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Murvis Brown?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yep.
Wu?
Yep.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. And that motion passes, and we will go into closed session and adjourn after we come out. So there's no further business. Session?
So moved. Second. Oh, we don't have a clerk. There's the clerk.
We should repeat the motion.
Okay.
Would you like to repeat the notion, motion for the clerk?
I move that we come out of closed session.
I second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. With no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.